I would like to call this July 17th Fridley School Board Meeting to order. And if we could please rise and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll begin with approval of the agenda with suggested motions and resolutions. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sampson, seconded by Prueado. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. We'll begin with our spotlight on recognition.
And we do not have any spotlight for today.
We're taking the month off for summer.
Our lights have gone out.
All right, well, we'll move right along then. Next up, we have superintendent and staff report, so I would like to invite up the team from Fridley High School. We have Principal Patty Hand, Assistant Principal Kelly McConville, and activities and athletic director Dan Roth. So looking forward to your report on our high school activities.
Wonderful. Good evening.
Hi.
Thank you very much for the opportunity that you've given us to reflect on our past school year at Fridley High School and to give you kind of a sneak peek of what we're looking forward to as we set our vision and our goals for the upcoming school year as well. I will start with the presentation. All right. So the past two school years, we've really focused on our vision and what we believe for each and every student and how we want to be supportive, welcoming, inclusive, and create a safe environment to ensure that each and every one of our students is supported and successful. And through that, we've done that through our mission. And our mission consists of two things. It consists of our culture and it consists of our narrative. And the culture is what we're really, really working on creating, and we're using specific strategies, which we'll get into some detail about, and the why behind each of the strategies that we're using. And from that, that leads into our narrative, which is the story that we tell as we follow along our journey, our accomplishments, our failures. We do have both, but we just keep picking up and moving forward and learning from the things that we experience as we move forward to support each of our students. So there are four different pieces that we follow as strategies to help us shape our mission, which then hopefully helps us move forward with our vision. And our first one is standards-based grading. And standards-based grading, we are, we just completed our first full year of implementation as, and we're thinking ahead to our second year of full implementation. But we really have had an opportunity to reflect on the why. Why are we doing this? Why did we switch and move to standards-based grading? And what we decided and what we've learned over the last several years is that our grading did not reflect the learning that our students were doing, and we really want to reflect the learning. We also wanted to ensure that we had consistent practices which accurately reflect the learning, and we saw that it wasn't always consistent across each of our disciplines, each of our departments. And so we also, one other thing that we really wanted to focus on is not just the knowledge that our students were learning, but their understanding and what could they do with it? What could they see, feel, think, believe, and manipulate with the knowledge that they were learning? So through our hard work, we have found lots of success. We continue on our journey. I have a list of different accomplishments. I won't read through all of them as you have them in front of you, but I guess I would like to highlight the one that we spent a ton of time on and I'm most proud of is the work that we did around it, our professional growth that we did around standards-based grading. We spent a lot of time in staff development, a lot of time in our tiger times interdisciplinary groups as well, really learning ourselves and learning on how to also really help our students understand and continue to help our community understand. So we are on that journey and we will continue that journey. But we are, we're proud of what we've done. We've spent a lot of time talking about it. We have a teacher leadership team at the high school that we spend a great deal of time on, and we came up with different procedures and different processes that we want to use, but we always talk about how they are not in stone. We'll continue to reflect and continue to evaluate. How is this going? What does the data show us? Is it showing us what we wanted to show us? Or are we just feeling this is just anecdotal and our feelings about it? Or is this really helping our students learn and is it demonstrating that? We are really proud in a week. We have three of our educators that are presenting the connection between standards-based grading and international baccalaureate program at the IB Global Conference. So we're really proud. We're really, we're leaders in this and we're sharing our understanding on an international level. So we're really proud. We are really moving on our work and it is being recognized, and we are being asked to present at that level, which is wonderful.
May I ask what kind of response you've received so far from parents and students around it? I know it's been hard for some to understand, so just wondering what you're hearing.
Yep, great question. Two different ways. I can separate that into two different groups. Our students, there's mixed reviews, and that I wasn't surprised on at all. It continues to evolve. And so what we've learned is we've figured out some different tools and some kind of pieces that we can use within the classroom, actual tools that students will then go through with their instructor and actually kind of go through the process that the instructor goes through as they're looking at students' learning and where they are, looking at the rubrics and how they got there and what does this mean? And they actually go through the exercise themselves, and that actually has helped a great deal is actually have them with their boots on the ground through the process. So that's kind of been a breakthrough this year, rather than just keep trying to explain it, trying to explain it, actually have them get their hands dirty as well, and that's been helpful. So we'll continue working with that. We're going to try to find some other tools as well that'll be helpful, just to give them some diverse experiences in that, in that area. So we'll continue. With our parents, it's one phone call at a time. We have wonderful IB coordinators at the high school with our NYPD programs that have been super helpful. Our administrative team as well has been super supportive and helpful answering the phone calls. But then also what we, one of our goals is with our monthly newsletter to our families is to put something out every single month. And I actually, as we look towards next school year, finding a couple key teachers because it has come from our coordinators and from our administration, and I'm actually going to move some of that communication to our teachers who are knee-deep and elbow-deep in the work, to be putting out monthly communications to continue the next step, the next step, the next step, and making sure that we're putting out information on a regular basis as well as continuing to offer opportunities during activities such as conferences and such to make sure that we're offering opportunities to come in and learn more and ask your questions. And sometimes we get a wonderful group of parents, you know, a great number, and sometimes we have a few. It depends on what else is going on that evening with families' lives, and I understand that. But what we do and will continue to offer those opportunities.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then with that, as we move into next steps into next year, because that's part of our evaluation process and kind of reflecting on and already starting to plan for our next school year, which we're excited about, is we're going to continue. There's lots of different procedures and processes that we've created, some we've already changed a little bit and some I'm like, well, if, we really need to give it time and for things to be done really well. In my mind, we give it some time and sometimes years to really marinate and understand and continue to tweak. And so we're going to continue working on those procedures that we have in place. We're also going to continue, as I said, the focus on student practice and the importance of student practice and how do we make sure that students understand the value of that practice to ensure that they can then demonstrate their learning? And it's just moving from practice to let's demonstrate our learning, not compliance, not completion, but learning. And so that's a big learning for us. And then really, really importantly is moving from, learning from this year's experiences and then planning for next year's as we continue looking at curriculum, looking at our assessments. And what I've heard from a lot of our instructors, which is really fun, is how much standards-based practices really reflects, and they think more and more and more about their instruction as well, which is the whole piece of it. It's not about content only, it's also about their instruction of the content. And so that's been really fun, and so we'll continue that journey as well. So we're happy with where it's at. It's not without struggle, but nothing good comes without struggle in my mind, so we're okay with that. But that's where we are, is one of our strategies as we move forward with our vision.
Okay, I'd like to address our Avid program, which is one of the pieces of the fabric of our school. And just to let you know, for those who don't, Avid is a specific program within the school. It's typically there to help support what we would maybe call the underserved, the academic middle that sometimes would possibly seen as being forgotten. And at the same time, oftentimes it is first-generation families to college. And so what it is, the students have to apply, and there's criteria that Avid program has that students have to meet, and then staff will help determine, then there's a criteria that they must keep to stay in the program. We've had some great accomplishments. We've seen students kind of thrive in that. And one of the things that I think that we've, are really excited about is that we now have two ninth-grade programs, two ninth-grade classes that are beginning to move through. We've had three full Avid graduating classes that have gone through the full program, and now it is started, we started last year down in the middle school, and so those kids are now coming who have Avid backgrounds. And what we found is that all, in our three groups, all of our students were accepted into at least one four-year college. So we feel that it's working and we, what's going to happen next? You know, what are we looking forward to? So what's our next step? Well, one thing is we are going to really continue to focus on organization, self-management. We will now have binders, not just for kids in the Avid program, but it's going to be all of our ninth graders. We'll use the binder program. And so that is what we're seeing is our, our Avid strategies. We are now going outside of the program. And just like our standards base is now everyone, it's, so we're, we're making sure that the best strategies for students and learning are being used across all curriculums. I think that we will continue with our Avid tutorials, which really goes in line with our standards-based grading, because if you are familiar at all with the tutorials, the students have to, they decide what they want to present and work, and they have other students who, it could be on a problem that they're having. And so rather than just say, I don't know, they are responsible for finding out, and there's some adults in the room that help them, but it's really about the students. And so the students realize that in our world, problem-solving is important, and to just quit, that's not going to solve your problem. And there may be someone there who will get it for you. And so that student teaches the other student. And so we think that we just have to continue to make that kind of a part of our strategy of learning. I would say that we're going to continue to work at applying these strategies and staff working with the Wicker strategies as well. So that's kind of what our next steps are, that's Avid.
Glad to hear you're taking those tools beyond just the students in the program.
All right. Another strategy that we're using is our culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and learning with Dr. Shrocky Holly. We're really proud of our work. We're in year three at the high school. With permission to move ahead, a few years ago, we were able to jump right on it and get working on it. And our why behind our CLR work is, it's just everything that we need to do is to make sure that our students have a safe, welcoming, inclusive environment in which they, they feel validated and affirmed for their home culture and they're able to bridge to academia as well. Having the skills, having the support, feeling safe, it's all what we want for our students. And so I believe so strongly in our work around CLR, and I love it. We have had over, I'll highlight one of our accomplishments. We've had over 40 staff members already coached individually through the instructional cycles. Not only do we have the large group and we do everything, we model as administrators, we model as professional growth team, all of our staff development focuses around the strategies, not only the skill set, but also really focusing and reflecting on the mindset, because that's even more important than the skill set around what we believe. And, but it's amazing. I've already counted for this upcoming school year how many we actually, staff members have not had the opportunity, the instructional staff members, and it's 15 maybe, that haven't actually had the opportunity to go through the coaching cycles. And then our non-instructional staff, which is our admin team, our support teams, social workers, psychologists, they've also had a lot of opportunity to meet with our coaches that come to our building to help support us, and with Dr. Holly as well, really looking at how do we do CLR outside the classroom and support in our hallways and our cafeterias and our offices, at our football games and every venue that we have. And so we're real, we're real proud. We also have now moved on a national level as well. Two of our instructors at the high school are now working for Dr. Holly as well as national consultants, working as coaches, and that's a tribute to Fridley High School. We believe strongly in it. There isn't a classroom that you don't go into now. It's just kind of part of what we do, and then we continue to want to support to make sure that the work is institutionalized within our building. And so we have something called a swim team, and our swim team is practice. And because we call, Dr. Holly uses the metaphor swimming, and where are you with your swimming when you're in the water? How, kind of how good are you at honing in your skill set? And so we have a swim team where we practice call and response protocols, discussion protocols, different things that we use, movement, music, different things within the classroom, and we go out and we practice them, they come back. And, because what teachers, what we found is they really just need time to reflect on it, say, wow, I really bombed that, or this went really well, or I did bomb that. How did you do it that you were so successful? And so I'm, I'm real proud of the work around CLR, and I'm thrilled that we get to continue the work.
Do you have just an example or two of what you're noticing in terms of the students and the impact on classroom? Or maybe you have that planned and I'm ahead of myself.
No, it's, it's a wonderful question. It's all about student engagement. If students feel safe, welcomed, included, they're valued.
But are you noticing?
Yes.
Changes?
Absolutely noticing changes. It's fun. Our last two years within, with our instructional coaches as well, our instructional leaders that we work with, with all our observations and walkthroughs, it's real fun. We focused, the last two years have been dedicated around student engagement, and so that's the conversations. And what are we going to see around student engagement? And then, you know, what sorts of strategies are you using to ensure that each and every student, and how do you know that each and every student is engaged? What data are you using to see that? And it's real fun. Not only do we talk about it in our pre-observation conferences, we see it in an observation, then we, we celebrate a lot in our post, and then we encourage and motivate and push a little bit, like, so what's next? You know, you're pretty comfortable with these, can you add another one? You know, and what would that look like? And so we definitely are seeing it. Dan has a real fun story. He'd actually, when we've been talking about this presentation, he talked about a leadership, a student leadership. I don't want to speak for him, maybe I'll have you jump in really quick, but it was, you see it, and so it was a real good example, so I'll have him quick share.
Okay.
So just last week, we had a bunch of leaders in, and we started our first become worth following, and I had six coaches who were, we split up of how we were going to each take portions. And it was awesome to see all the little, small, little strategies that the coaches were using that kind of went through the CLR wheel. And I had a presenter there, and I kind of, I'm a transition, came in on a transition and said, hey, everybody, how about a big thanks for Pete? And I snapped one finger, and all of a sudden the kids all gave some props. I mean, it's just part of our culture. The kids just know it. I watched how they just, their movement activities, they just, they don't need direction, they get it. When we start movement activities, the kids just get right in. They don't, there's not this big transition change. So it's kind of fun, it's starting to happen.
And the example that Dan was sharing was, it's really, really important within a culture, not only in the classroom but across the school, whether it's an activity, in an assembly, whatever, is that we validate and affirm each other, and we respect and we acknowledge and celebrate. And so the snaps, the kids, really in any classroom you go in, it's not always traditional clapping or ignorance, you know, to ignore the accomplishment or the recognition, they just all put their hands up. And there's lots of really, really fun ways to validate and affirm. And so it's fun that the kids just instantly know exactly what to do. They understand it, and I think that they value it as well. So it's real fun.
Great.
All right. So I'm here to talk about the climate. So, you know, climate's that feeling that you have when you walk into a space, and at Fridley High School, we really want to have that welcoming, safe, supportive environment focused on learning. And so one of the new things that we did this last year, and I think it really was really beneficial for our students, we separated out, we created kind of a suite, a separate room, so that what we were finding the prior year was that students were trying to get their needs met in the bathrooms. They were talking amongst themselves because they felt like there was a stigma to going down to student support services, because that's where students went if they were in trouble or they were sent out. So we created a restorative suite, so we staffed that. So if students were having barriers to success in the classroom, they had a place to go, where we really tried to unpack those barriers, to restore the relationships with teachers, with other students, to find out what was getting in the way of the learning, and really to look at, how do we keep kids in school? How do we keep kids in the classroom? And how do we get them back in the classroom as soon as possible to continue that learning? And we've seen the students that need that social-emotional support, proactive support, whether it's college and career planning, whether they need help with that, they feel comfortable going to the Student Support Service Center now, because that's, it's not like, that's where the kids that are in trouble go. It's where anybody who needs help goes to. So we're really proud of that, that shift this past year. Within that, we also started our, kind of our grit system, kind of taken from the middle school, the PBIS, and looking at positive supports for, or positive supports for students. So looking at grit in different spaces, kind of what are the expectations? How are students supposed to behave? And then rewarding positively for students. And we have grit tickets, we have a grit store, we have a team that's working on planning that, and we felt that it was really successful this year. Students were able to redeem them for different things, prom tickets, yearbooks, really trying to find incentives for students to do the, to do the right things. So it's not just focusing on the behaviors that might be negative or those things, but to really focus on behaviors that, you know, to set expectations. So within that, it's kind of the CLR strategies in the classrooms, really teaching, we're giving the teachers these tools to work with students in the classroom, because we're really trying to limit the send-outs and giving that tools. And we really feel that teachers are responding well to that, as well as restoring that relationship with students, so that they can come back, it's restored, and really taking that time to doing that. That's something new this last year as well. So next steps, I think we're really looking at continuing the work that we started this past year and really melding, kind of we have the MTSS multi-tiered system of sports type, the grit with the CLR, but really meld those strategies together to create something cohesive and really looking at blending that together to support our students. So it's something that I'm really proud of. It's something that I always talk about with prospective families, just come to our building, come anytime during the day, come see the learning that's occurring, come feel the climate. It's something that I think is really positive at the high school and something I'm really proud of.
I don't know if this is connected to all the stuff you're talking about, but I really noticed for the first time ever at any graduation, the students cheered when every single student's name was called and went across the, you know, often you'll hear cheers for one kid, but then silence for the other, and they cheered for every single student that crossed the stage.
And I do think that that is a part of all of these things, but it is really that size, that community, that strong community, and in a strong climate supports a strong community. And really, we're all in this together, everybody's working hard, and it's something that builds that, and it is always kind of highlighted here to see that.
So activities, how does it fit into that tapestry? Well, I see it as it broadens the jurisdiction of who we allow into school, who will come in and play school. Some grow up naturally playing it well, and others, as we've seen, just have struggle fitting, and that's part of what that whole climate, Avid, all those things. But activities really does that, because when we, what is activities? Well, for us, it's co-curricular, it's extracurricular, we have the fine arts, we have clubs which are during the day and after school, and we have athletics. And so all of those kind of blend together. And so we think that what it's going to do is it helps kids, especially at this age, who, who of us don't choose to do something we like in our own free time? Like, there's not many things that we choose. I do things I don't like for reasons that I like. Like I work out because I don't want to be out of shape, I want to be healthy. But maybe it's not really fun at the time to work out, right? We know that feeling.
Did that just come out of an athletic director's mouth?
But then, here we are, we have kids with school, and they come because they like being on that team, they like playing that instrument. And if we can capture that passion and build the relationships and get them into school and see how those things work together, and that's what's happening. And so I think that right now, our become worth following, so we're training, we have trained educators that are training right alongside with the kids. And so I think, we think that that's going to be pretty organic and all those conversations happen, not only on the field or on the court, but also maybe in the classroom, in the hallway. We have our professional developers intertwined, so our teachers, and they're using those CLR strategies right within their teams of how they're working with teams, and continue to work on the value systems of the, of the high school league and the why we play culture. And we have some success stories that, a few that I think, one was 17 of our 18 full DP graduates participated in co-curricular activities. Eight were athletes, four were fine arts, five were both, and there was only one that wasn't in a fine art or athletics. And all of them were in a club, at least one club. The other thing that has been interesting, we had 13 graduates who have committed to play a sport in college at the Division One, Division Two, Division Three, or junior college level. And I think when I first got here, we may, I don't think we had any when that first started. You can see, we've had, you know, it's in activities you measure and you look at this, but we're across the board. And a couple really fun ones were our baseball team winning a conference championship, first time since 1972. I mean, it's pretty amazing. Our key club is just knocking it out, and now we just have the key club president of the whole organization international. So we just are doing some really fun, amazing things, but that doesn't count, all those relationships we're building that last lifetimes. And so those are the things, like I said earlier, that we'll know in 20 years where that success is. What's next? We will continue to look at our Rise and Shine Club. That's what I call the, those coaches and those advisors that are getting up early to get specifics, professional development before school. They come at 6:30 once a month. And so I appreciate that kind of passion and commitment that they have to try to get better. We are really looking at some accountability pieces for behavior, specifically attendance along with our teams and tardies, trying to build the team character and work on team characteristics that are really going to be the things that are going to help these be good citizens as they move along in life. We will continue to work on the idea of performance and moral values and hone that as we talked earlier. Thank you.
We thought we'd include a little slide, because the slide tells, the pictures tell it all. We, we really have worked really hard. It's, it was fun to present together because we are a team, and all the pieces, all of our strategies that we've talked about, that is what our tapestry is all about. That's our story, that's our journey, that's the work that we believe so deeply in, and that's the work that we're going to continue to work on, on this upcoming school year, because it is, it's all about culture, that's what we're trying to build and create in that sense of community. And I'm glad I've recognized that too. Every student at graduation was cheered for and should be. And so that community is, and you see it, you see it in the halls, you see it at lunch, you see it before and after school. I mean, it's just a really cool place to be, and kids feel included and safe and welcome and happy. And so they have lots of opportunities, but we really, really, really are reaching out and continuing to build the relationships with our students and their families and with each other. Any questions?
I've asked my share. Thank you for your time. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite up Jael McLemore to share the results of the district parent survey that was distributed this past spring to parents of Fridley Schools.
This past school year in the spring, the district conducted a parent survey that was open to all our families. We have open enrolled students and we have resident students. So some, three years ago, our district used to participate in a survey called the Five Essential that was administered from the University of Chicago. And this one was specific for our staff and our students. So our parents never got an opportunity to give us feedback on how we were doing. So we were excited to create something organically that we could own and look at the data repeatedly that really focused on just our families. And the Five E did not have a parent component in it, so even if we had wanted to, we were not able to participate in that. So this was an exciting opportunity for us because we always, you know, we may be able to look at data and kind of figure out how we are doing, but we want to be able to have parents give us feedback on how well we are doing on things or some areas that we need to improve on through this journey of educating their children. So I'll go through this briefly because I know we are running short of time. So... So this was again in the spring, and, sorry, in the spring, and we used various methods of communication and outreach to get the word out to parents, this was all online, so it was open to all families who were able to take the survey. We have about 624 responses, and based on single households at Fridley, that was about 25% return rate, which was, we were excited to see that. So these are just some data in terms of who answered what questions, we are always interested to look at that, just to make sure that the voices that we are hearing is representative of our students, and if it's not reflective of that, then we need to know what to do differently the following go around, so we make sure that all voices are included in there. So one of the questions that we did ask our parents was, in terms of parent training and information that would be useful to them, so they were able to identify and pick, you know, which one they thought that will be most useful to them. And our parents, again, this is the district overall data, we are able to separate and aggregate, disaggregate the data for each school and share that with our building leaders, but overall across the district, our parents say that the most important thing for them was getting information and training on how to support their children's education. Supporting their children's social, emotional well-being was a close second, learning about the curriculum, how to prepare their children for high school, for our parents who have children in middle school and high school, and behavior support for children. We have smaller numbers in terms of resource to strengthen parenting skills and special education services simply by the numbers of parents who identify children who have special needs in the school district. So again, this is just, you know, a quick pie chart to show where our responses were coming from, the high school had the most, followed closely by the middle school, and our elementary schools were evenly tied. The good thing about this, we, all our parents were able to, we are representative of all schools, you know, participating in the survey. So from all the schools, transition program in preschool, including our area learning center. So we had, the following is just a series of fifteen questions that we asked, we were asking parents to kind of give us feedback on how we are doing in terms of communication, family engagement, how we are involving parents in schools, and climate and culture in our schools, as well as our academic programs and rigor of the programs that we provide. So the next series of questions is just to ask different questions to get to the same response on how they feel our schools, whether they are welcoming academically, we are challenging students, we are communicating well, and we continue to engage families in our schools. So when we look at if the school is a friendly and welcoming place, this is something that typically when parents walk in, that's a feel of the building that you get when they are coming in for after-school activities or just to come for meetings, how they were greeting us on that is pretty good, we got high scores on that. Most of our parents felt that their children's schools were welcoming places for their children to learn. So 78% of them agreed, and just, you know, under 10% of them disagreed with that, so we have some areas of improvement there as well. Adults at the school, we just had the principal of our high school talk about the culture and the climate and how having an adult in the school who cares and engages students makes a difference in terms of the engagement level of students as well. We also scored very highly on this, 79 of our parents agree with that statement, that the adults in our buildings, whether they are teachers or support staff, do treat students with respect. And when it comes to information about how their children are doing, this is one of the areas that we know we have work to do. Again, we have a couple of questions in there that tested communication, and one of them was just the overall communication that comes to school, sometimes the emergency things that happen, school-wide communication that needs to go out to parents. The parents felt that that was well, that was really going very well, but maybe the area that we needed to improve on was the teacher-to-parent communication in terms of progress, academic progress of students. So I know as our building principals look at this data, that may be part of the professional development that they incorporate in terms of making sure that when it comes to communication, at least it's systemic across schools, so that parents who may have a child in one level in a different level is still getting the same level of speedy communication in terms of academic progress for each child or each grade. Adults at the school seems to work well together, the only thing that stands out here for me is the number of parents who may not know how that works, because maybe they are not as visible in the schools, they may not be frequent in our schools, as some parents who may volunteer, you know, more, or who may participate more in after-school activities for their children. But it's an area that we know when you have a child, for example, who have special needs and is working with teams, it's important for all the team members to have accurate information about the kids. But overall, the percentage is good as well, because they felt, most of them felt that, you know, they do work well together, and whenever needed, everyone is on the same page as far as the care and the education that the child needs to have. The reputation of the school, this is an area across the board that we do believe that we have work to do, because the parents felt that, I think that's one of our lowest, lowest scoring, about 59% of parents agreed that the reputation of their students are, the reputation of the school in the community is a good one. Activities, my child's, this was the engagement question, trying to engage families and how do we do outreach to get parents to be more involved? This one, 75% of our parents agreed that they do get the information, so typically when you're at the elementary schools and, you know, they have a wild cultures night and you see the number of parents who are there. So the communication is going out, some of our parents we do know are not able to participate, but as I looked at the data, it's also very clear that the engagement level in elementary school is very different from middle school and high school. So there are parents who may have graded that differently simply based on where their children are and the opportunities for engagement that are more available in certain levels than in others. Differences are respected, we live in a culture where students and families come to us who may be very different from who we are, and they have, they bring multiple perspectives with them, and we are happy to know that this is one of the areas that they also scored us very highly on. They feel that their children are in safe places, and regardless of who they are, they are treated with respect at the school. And this also leads to the culture of the building, where students feel safe and they feel that their school is welcoming and they are happy to be there. Eight was about the quality of instruction, we have a couple of questions in there about curriculum and programming, this was testing rigor, the quality of instruction at my child's school meets or exceeds my expectation. Another part to this survey is that we asked open-ended questions, so while this may give you a certain percent, of maybe 70% of them feel that that really meets their expectation and the needs of their children, they are able to then provide us with written feedback in specific ways of how that's supported, then they mention IB across the board, and how the opportunity to participate in that magnet program is really enhancing the education of their children. My child has been harassed or verbally abused more than once at this school, this is a question about climate again and culture, and we are more interested in seeing how this plays out, especially in secondary school, where sometimes kids are not able to express that well to their parents and may not be able to fully articulate some of the challenges or the difficulties that they have. So we do know that even with this one across the board, we have some work to do, and it's also reflective on the other training that parents were asking about, supporting their children socially, emotionally. So they do acknowledge that depending on their age level and depending on the school level, there are some difficulties that naturally occur, whether it's with, because of age, because of peer pressure, because of puberty, but we have areas to work on, and it was exciting to hear some of the conversation that our principals shared with us in terms of the support work that they are doing to make sure that, you know, the school continues to have the type of positive culture that continue to support the education and our kids continue to thrive. Quality of programs, again, this one was also a higher one, and when you look at the open-ended questions, parents specifically called out the IB program, they also talked about activities and the opportunities for their children to participate in something beyond school that helps grow strength and character, and they are actually looking for more opportunities for their children to participate in those types of things. Communication with families done in an open and respectful manner, this one also is a high scorer for us, most of our parents feel that whatever information we are sending out school-wide and one-on-one communications, whether it's through IP meetings, through conferences, is done in a respectful manner. So we are always happy to hear that, you know, we know that we have room for growth, but the feedback also helps us narrow down areas where we think that we need to continue to work on. There are clear rules, again, against hurting other people, this is a climate, again, question, so the differences, are the rules there and are they clear and are people following it? So most of our parents feel that those rules are there, we do talk about them, we put them in the student handbook as well. And if parents need additional information on how they can communicate that with their children, you know, we are more than ready to have some of our support staff that works directly with families to continue to provide that education and training for parents. Communication from school is timely and effective, again, that's a high scorer for us, we've worked really hard, some, our principals have created newsletters where they are placing information and sending that routinely to parents, so that when things happen, parents are aware of it, and we want to make sure that it's, you know, we are not overwhelming them with too many things, so it was great to have one thing in one place where all the grade-level information can be there for parents who may have children, you know, multiple children in one school, not to get so many different things, but to have one source of information directly from the principal, communicating about everything that has happened in that school for one month. Again, just using different platforms to make sure that when we do have those occasions where we need to reach parents right away, we are doing that in a timely manner. At my child's school, students have an adult they can trust, this is again a culture, a climate issue, when students feel that they have an adult they can trust, they are most likely to go to them and talk about their problems. Again, I'm going to go back to our principal because I thought, you know, when I was hearing them talk, that was reflective of the survey that, you know, we just did, when students feel that I have somewhere that I can talk to and can share those information, it can help prevent a lot of issues, and it can continue to build a positive school culture for everyone. And my overall experience with my child's school is positive, most of our parents agreed with this, the areas that they have identified that we need to continue to improve on, we are aware of what those issues are, we have shared this information with our principals, and they are coming together with a plan to be able to look at that data with their leadership teams and then share that information with staff. One of the things that we talked about earlier was how this information was going to be shared. We have a publication that we produce three times a year that we mail to our community, we have a summary of this information in there, we are also going to have it on our website, and our principals are going to come up with a plan on how they are going to continue to share this information with their families, knowing that there are different components to the questions that we are asking. The communication pieces may be a lot easier to handle versus behavior issues or culture issues or just the environment period, but we know that they are really looking at this and they are working hard, and they know that the more positive the environment is, the better children are going to do academically. So the next are just, you know, the open-ended questions in terms of what is working well for them, what are areas that we need to improve on, they rate our teachers and staff very highly, that connection is really important for students when they have an adult in the school building that they trust, and they have an adult in the building that they feel cares about them. So our parents always, this is not the first time we've done surveys like that, always rate our teachers and staff at the very top. And of course, they love the diversity of our student body, communication school-wide is working great for them, they love the fact that most of our schools are small and our district is a small school district. The curriculum, especially the IB on all levels, we have a continuum from preschool all the way to 12th grade, and the small feel of the school helps create a sense of community, and of course, the activities that are provided. We can always still improve on student behavior, communication to parents, after-school activities in terms of creating more opportunities for kids, rigorous and challenging courses and just making sure that there is equity in terms of the student participation in that open enrollment. There are some questions about that that we are happy to answer, those for community members, diverse staff, curriculum, and of course, the grading system that they still feel that they need more information on.
Very good, comprehensive information. I think, I don't think there were any, like, really huge surprises, so that's always good.
Yeah, yeah.
It points out some of the things we were working on, but know that we need to continue to keep working on, but there weren't any real big red herrings that none of us were, you know, aware of or in touch with, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Very helpful information and glad to see that there's plans being done to take this information forward and some action steps around it. So we'll look forward to hearing more about that.
Thank you.
As you get those developed, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we move on to the business action items of our meeting, we'll be, we have a series of resolutions here this evening. Each month, we pass a resolution, we're fortunate each month to pass a resolution for accepting gifts that have been contributed to the Fridley School District. So therefore, be it resolved that the school, school board of Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gifts received by the school district. The following persons donated to Fridley Public Schools for a total of $50, and that is the first student for the bus safety contest. The following persons donated to Hayes Elementary for a total of $200, and that is from the Fridley Lions Club. So those are our contributions for this month. Do I have a motion to approve, to accept the gifts?
I move the resolution to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions.
Second.
Moved by Sampson, seconded by Riddle, and this is a resolution, so clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Ms. Double?
Aye.
Ms. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stone?
Aye.
Resolution passed. Next, I'll look to Dr. Heil to talk about the resolution on the renewal membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
Thank you, we're asking for the board for approval to renew the membership in the Minnesota State High School League, please.
Move the resolution to approve the 2018-2019 renewal membership for the Metro, M-H, or M-S-H-S-L.
Moved by Sampson, seconded by Thornton. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Double?
Aye.
Ms. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stone?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution passed. Next, we have the TIES reorganization agreement.
Yeah, so the next three are tied together, so we have the TIES reorganization agreement, the TIES agreement to where Sourcewell is coming in to be part of TIES, and then the most important piece, the TIE member district approving reorganization resolution, which is the last one. So this has been something that has been worked on extensively by TIES, especially with Sourcewell since April, and all the member districts, and it's a good thing as we go to dissolution with TIES, our initial fee that all the member districts, and specifically Fridley, we're looking at was $44 per student cost, which is around $150,000, liability for dissolution of TIES, that number is now at about $19.50, which is right around $60,000 for our district, which is a, it's a significant savings on what we were looking at about a month ago. So again, these three, the two agreements and the resolution are before you for your approval tonight.
Laurie, can I make my motion for all three, if I name them? Okay, I would move the resolution to accept the TIES reorganization agreement, to accept the TIES and Sourcewell joint powers agreement, and to approve the member, the approving reorganization for the TIES members.
Second.
For all three?
For all three, yes. No, just for two of the three, but I'll make you guess.
So because we have to, we have to call the roll for a resolution, I first want to ask upfront if all board members are in favor of supporting all three, so we call the roll one time, knowing that your one-time "aye" is actually saying you agree with all three. with all three.
Yes.
Is that the wish of the body?
Yes, please.
All right, so clerk, we will call the roll one time and your aye or nay will be passing or not approving all three resolutions at once.
Mr. Duffield?
Aye.
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 Uh, resolution one, two, and three all passed, all related to TIES. That's been a long process. Um, next up, I'll invite you again, Matthew, to talk about, uh, a motion for the rate for our two thousand eighteen, nineteen.
We skipped one.
Got the human rights first.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, you got one more.
That's kind of a habit tonight. Um, I'm going to back up and, uh, this one is actually, Dr. Heil is going to talk about this one, Minnesota Department of Human Rights and the Fridley ISD fourteen collaborative agreement.
Thank you. Uh, the Minnesota Department of Human Rights have accepted a collaborative agreement with the Fridley Public Schools. We're asking this evening for the board to approve to accept this agreement.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Riddle, seconded by Stark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, uh, motion carried. Uh, now we'll move on to the private transportation contracts.
So state statute requires school districts to transport students attending non-public schools to either the district boundary or to the non-public school within the district's boundaries. Annually, per district policy, we adopt a rate and in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, our maximum rate per family is going to be three, uh, uh, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. Um, so tonight we have this for you before your, for your approval.
Do we have a motion to approve the private transportation rates for, or contracts for, um, two thousand eighteen, nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sampson, seconded by Thornton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Um, next we have the school board salary and stipends motion and this is for, um, we annually review the salary of the school boards and stipends associated with, um, additional committee work and, um, contract work. And do I have a motion to approve the school board salary for the eighteen, nineteen school year?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sampson, seconded by Pruido.
I'd just like to make a note that, uh, the percentages that we're talking about here are the same percentages that were agreed upon with all of our contracts, with all of our, uh, union groups, uh, for the year.
Thank you. And I should have added before, we typically approve this in January at the beginning of the year, but because, um, we didn't have any contracts settled at that time, we held off until the contracts were settled so that we could, um, follow in line with whatever the contract settlement agreements were. Thank you. Uh, so approved, or I'm sorry, motion by Sampson, seconded by Pruido. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Moving on to the consent agenda, this is, um, we'll be asking for a motion to approve items that are on the regular, um, docket each month. Uh, the consent agenda for July are the minutes of the school board business meeting and work session held on June nineteenth, the monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leave of absences, terminations, resignations, and retirements, athletic cooperatives for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, for girls' swimming with Totino Grace, girls' gymnastics with Osseo, boys' hockey with Irondale, girls' hockey with North Metro Stars. Uh, eh, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve all consent agenda items from June.
Second.
Motion by Pruido, seconded by Stark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Um, now we'll move on to the written information portion of our meeting and we have a first reading of three different policies and I'll refer to Dr. Heil for those.
Thank you. This evening we, I will be sharing changes per MSBA. The following changes have been made. On policy one oh two, equal educational opportunity, the change, the word gender was changed to gender, identity, and expression. Uh, for policy two oh five, for open meetings and closed meetings, the following changes occurred. If school board members will be participating in a meeting and will not be physically present, the person cannot participate by phone, but must be visually present through the use of interactive technology. And our last policy that I'll be sharing this evening will be for policy two oh six, public participation in school board meetings and the changes that occurred in that policy, the word citizen or citizens was changed to person or persons.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and we'll bring those back next month for a second reading, so you have time to look those over more. Thank you for highlighting the, the changes on those. Uh, reports from school board members, we kind of have a small slate this month. I'll look to you, Mr. Riddle.
All right, Northwest Suburban, we had our, uh, meeting in June. It's kind of our, uh, end of the, end of the year wrap-up. We get the kind of the state of the state of the collaborative. Um, really the, the biggest thing coming out that we're talking about, uh, was really looking at, uh, perc- participation and the numbers there. Uh, across the seven, uh, member districts of the consortium, if you look at some of the outside, uh, programs and services that they offer, things like college tours, the Essence and Step Up mentorship programs, looking at the multicultural, uh, in, they call them IDPs, basically the inter-district, uh, programs that they offer so that they bring in folks from around the, the seven different districts and talk about topics. Um, they've got educators rising programs, uh, the magnet school programs. Uh, and all of that, uh, they served over seventy-two hundred, or excuse me, seventy-seven hundred students across the collaborative. So it's a, it's a reasonable number, we're hoping it to be a little bit higher, um, but there was certainly a lot of, uh, work done on that. Talked about each of the individual programs and some of their highlights, uh, which I won't go into here. One thing that also, uh, I'd like to just point out is, is there's a multicultural resource center, uh, that they offer various different, uh, kits and things that, that instructional leaders, uh, can bring in, back into their classrooms to talk about, uh, all of the different topics that they might be looking at. They get really a high amount of, uh, views for that. They actually touched about thirty-two hundred, or excuse me, thirty-two thousand students uh, across the collaborative with those, uh, materials. So it's a very highly thought-of thing. I know teachers are in there and are just amazed by some of the things they can find in there to help them out in their classwork and their curriculum, so.
Great resource.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Um, I do want to mention before I go into important future school board dates that the present, the communications presentation that Jael, um, shared will be, can be found on our website. Um, and then it will also be in future district materials, but if you're looking for that and want to look that over more closely, it can be found on the Fridley School District website. Um, important future school board dates, we have the Northeast Metro nine sixteen board meeting, August first from six P, at six PM at the Bel Air School. Um, the board will also be doing a retreat that evening as a extended part of their board meeting as well. Uh, AMSD board meeting, August tenth from seven to nine AM at the Ties Conference Center. Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting, August twenty-first, the work session at five-thirty in City Hall Conference Room A, the open forum at seven in City Conference, City Hall Conference Room A, and the business meeting at seven-thirty PM in the City Council Chambers. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move to adjourn at eight-thirty-three.
Second.
Motion by Riddle, seconded by Stark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, meeting adjourned, eight-thirty-three.